Can you just reach under these here chairs? Eric, today, as we see there, we're talking about community and that's really the hub of what we're trying to achieve here. So before I go any further, I'll do a quick introduction. You're going to see two people talking tonight just because the rest of them are scared. So there's myself, who'd been kind of chairing the steering group of the working groups that we started, who, it was eighteen of us out of fifty-two that turned up for the first meeting. And then a month later, we had a second meeting and we kind of fed back with about forty for that. So it was eighteen people weaving away in the background to gather the information to try and give us an idea of where we need to be going and what the possibilities are for this circumstance. So really just the purpose of Andrew and I being here. So my name's Brian Dixon, this is Andrew Jammers, Andrew's our lawyer, who's been kind to give his time to help us with the project and look into the legalities of what we need to look after. So my background, because again, it's, everybody likes to know who's talking and everybody likes to know who's involved. And I'm a new face to the equation, because I only moved to Seladike at the beginning of November. And the secret of that story is, don't put your hand up at the end of a meeting when you're not listening to the right of putting your hand up, because that's why I'm standing here tonight. But I basically moved to Seladike, I've been trying to move for four years, finally got to move at the beginning of November. And the purpose of that was to be a grandpa. So my son there is videoing the meeting for us tonight, so he's videoing it from the back, so we're only capturing the back of your heads. The purpose of that is so that we've got a record of the meeting and the discussion and engagement with the community, because that's all very important when we go looking at funding. Because we've got to be seen to be engaging with the community and proving that we're listening and that we're going to meet the needs and the wants of the community in order to get the funding that will require to make the project happen. So I'm one of your local posties, I deliver an answer on Pudding Weem, I wasn't always a postie, I used to wear suits and ties and planes, trains and automobiles and all that meeting stuff. So I'm quite comfortable sitting in meetings and involving documents and stuff, which is why I stepped forward at the start. Tonight's very much about us explaining what's happened so far, what we've got with the information we've gathered so far, the picture that presents in terms of what we could achieve. But also trying to get the message out is to say, look, nothing's concrete in any shape or form, because it all depends on the ideas and the thoughts that we get from the community. We've got to be seen to meet the needs and the wants of the community, we absolutely do. This is not just a group of people that step forward and are looking to control a project in any shape or form, because over the piece, we're all volunteers and at some stage, life takes over for all of us, we've all got busy lives, sometimes life takes over, a couple have had to step by the wayside short term. So more people will become involved in the project, hopefully, and it'll be as inclusive as we can possibly make it. So in terms of where we've got to, we met and we went away and did a lot of research, came back, so that then presented as a circumstance where we've gathered the information we could then engage with certain bodies. So at this point in time, we're probably, we need to think about formalising ourselves, and we'll touch on that later, because we've secured a £2,000 seed fund, which will allow us to pay for things like hiring the hall tonight, teas and coffees, setting up a website, printing off brochures and stuff like that, to build a bit of capacity around the project, because that's something we need to achieve. So at this point in time, we're going to move forward to kind of moving from just working groups, was the title that we began, to steering groups. And we're not, we're not trying to create things for the sake of it, but it's just normal for people to give descriptions to the certain stages of that in the project. So we're moving at that, and at some stage we'll touch on later, to what we'll look to become in terms of formalising ourselves as a proper entity. And that's because if we're going to go for funding and open a bank account in our own name, we'll have to do that, it's just what we naturally need to do. So the message is very simple, here's the ideas so far, what do you think and what do you want, and we are listening, trust me, we are listening. So what's the current situation, the recent history, the haven's been up for sale on and off for a few years, and Trevor's a businessman who wants to move on. It's no secret, and Trevor's quite happy for us to say this, that his preferred option would be to see a community buyout happen, because he's been twenty-odd years part of this community with his sadly passed wife, and he would love to see this become a community circumstance. So he's very positive of that, but he is a businessman, he's got a business that he wants to move on from, and at the end of the day, the business is up for sale. So the circumstance is, someone could come along and buy their business next week, potentially, in which case, they're still a pub in the village. So the other alternative is that somebody comes along and puts a bid in that's sufficiently attractive to change it into private or rented accommodation, which is least attractive, because it means the community loses its asset. There is no meeting place in the community down by Seladike Harbour anymore. So that's a trade sale, private rental accommodation, so that, you know, the big question is, the feeling that we're getting strongly back from people is, it's regarded as a community asset. A lot of people have got a story attached to the haven, they've had moments in their life where they've had family get-togethers, they've had various regular times they've been out there over the years, so a lot of people have got a lot of affection and connection for the haven. So but right now, it's operating as a one-level circumstance, and one of the big things we've got to remember here is that it's two floors of that whole building, the same size, and a huge garden. And that's the whole entity we're looking at, and what could be possible if that was a community asset? And what could be done for the community using that whole facility? So the big question is, what if the haven wasn't there? And I'd ask you to think about that, you know, what's Seladike going to be like if there was no haven? So we're literally, we're looking at the corner shop, and then all the way down before we get to the, you know, the coffee places down at the tidal pool, and really nothing in between. So that's the big thing. So what's possible from our perspective is a community buy-in. Now, I'll touch on community pubs and what's happening, the story of this came out of the very local circumstance, which is the inn at King's Barns. The inn at King's Barns, their circumstance is happening right now, it's just, they're trapped in legal meantime now, lawyers, good lesson. And they're trickling over the kind of final stages of concluding their deal and their circumstance. But out of that came the idea, could that happen at the haven? And then from that came the first meeting, and then leads on to today. So but the key perspective is, it's a community pub, but it's a hub that happens to have a community pub. And that's the kind of sea change, there'll still be a pub there, there'll still be a good pint to be had, but it's changing that circumstance round to being a more inclusive circumstance for the whole community and taking advantage of that facility. And really what it is, is about, if you look at the base politics of it is, governments are not building community facilities anymore. But if you can find a facility and you can prove that that could meet the needs of a community and all its needs and wants, there could be lump sum funding available, and there could be some seed funding to get you up and going. And then basically, at that stage, the government's done its best, it's helped the community get on its feet, and it's up to the community to run it forward. So that's potentially what we're looking at as we stand. So in terms of organisations we've engaged, we're trying to reach out to as many local organisations and have conversations, because the key thing here is, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to support the local community in all its wider sense and link into other community groups and the activities. We're not looking to compete with anyone, we're not looking to steal the chips off anybody's plate, there's absolutely none of that, it's very much a question of sitting down with everybody and saying, look, what can we do together? If there's any areas where people think there's a possible conflict, you know, it's about having a conversation and a dialogue, nothing's certain at this point in time. So there's one name there, Plunkett UK, and the reason that's mentioned is Plunkett is set up as an organisation to support circumstances like ours. So when we are starting off, Plunkett will step forward and engage with us, and they are the people that have given us the £2,000 seed funding. And then they, we can engage with them or we can choose to go another route, where we look, they will offer advice of us formalising ourselves and setting ourselves up appropriately, and then also facilitate meetings with people like Community Shares Scotland and Scottish Land Fund, who are the people that hold the big lump sums of money on behalf of central government. So there's other entities involved that we'll be talking to as we go down track, but there's been a fair bit of effort put into talking to local bodies as it stands just now, and getting out there to make sure that people understand what we think is possible and what we're trying to achieve, in order to then get feedback and see where we can be working together, and there's a lot of things we could be doing together. So substantial capital and other grants available, it's no secret, Trevor's got the haven up for sale, the guide price is £420,000. The sale price for other pubs in other areas has been substantially higher again, and typically the model is eighty-five to ninety percent capital grant funding, if you can prove your case. So that we get a big lump sum, so in that equation there, the community might at some stage have to find £63,000, but the rest of the funding would come in a central lump sum. And there would be potential other operational funding over the initial period, and then potential grant funding to improve the facility, to meet accessibility, the possibility of us getting a grant to put in a wee cupboard lift, take a wheelchair up and downstairs, which is a big requirement in there, the possibility to get funding for solar panels, air source pumps, to make the place more habitable in winter, because it's a community facility, all these things are distinctly more possible for a community building than they would be for a private entity going in there. So a lot of money to be spent if you're a private entity. So again, stressing, we've got to prove at all stages when we go forward for funding that we've engaged the community. And our first step tonight, we'll launch a survey monkey, Cortis of the tidal pool, who've very kindly agreed to let us use their licence to launch that. In typical community project fashion, our social media manager, who puts it up on the Facebook page, has just been flying back from Dubai, it's been delayed, and so it'll probably be tomorrow before we can get that up. But in the next kind of 24 hours, we'll get that launched. Tonight's video, we'll put up online, tonight's presentation, we'll put up online, and I mean, you click through the presentation, it'll be hyperlinked back through to other pubs and stuff that's happened. Because the wonderful thing for us in engaging with this circumstance has been that every other pub circumstance, community pub circumstance, they're so open, the business plan is online, there's no hiding anything, it's absolutely looked, open kimono, come see what we did, this is how we started, this is the process we went through, this is the business plan we submitted, this is the money we received, it's incredibly open in terms of the circumstance. So community pubs are happening, and the incredible figure is ninety-eight percent success rate. There's no other business sector classing it as a business that has that sort of success in terms of circumstance. It's got to be demonstrated to be inclusive, to be accessible, to be sustainable, it's got to meet all those current agendas that are on the table everywhere. It's got to be multifunctional and multi-generational, and one of the things we are very aware of is, two-thirds of this village is over sixty-five, and we're also very aware that a percentage of that village disappeared indoors pre-COVID or during COVID, and are struggling to come back out. And we want to look at how we can engage in making things happen to get people back out and back into a community circumstance. And I think there's lots of ways we could be doing that, lots of positive ways. So community pubs, community-owned, community-run pubs, two hundred over the UK and rapidly growing. Just this week, I've had contact from a location over near Kelso, Moab Battle, who are looking to start a pub, and they're just behind us in the equation. But we're getting contacted all the time with other people saying, look, share us your ideas, and they're all feeding off each other in terms of what they can do. When this presentation goes up, you'll be able to click on any of the logos there and go through, but if you look at the locations there, they're all small locations, they're all very similar locations to Seladike. And the one I draw in particular circumstance to is the Port Ballantyne Development Trust and the anchor, because I look at Port Ballantyne on the Isle of Butte, and Rossay in the Isle of Butte has been the main town, very similar in the relationship between Seladike and Anson, it's bigger neighbour, very, very similar. And they've managed, so there was four pubs in that wee village, they all shut down, I used to live in Rossay, they all shut down, and they've opened up the pub, and it's grown great guns, they're now actually taking over the building next door and extending that into other facilities. So they can grow from strength to strength. So what's possible, again stressing, it's across two floors of the haven, because downstairs in the haven, there's, you walk in, very few of us of recent times have been in the downstairs, a lot of people remember the downstairs as being the winter pub, being a cafe in the past, originally started as, you know, we go right back to the origins of the haven, it was a tiering before the restaurant happened upstairs. So when you go in there just now, there's a fantastic old grate that's been recently refurbished, that could be a real coal fire in the middle of winter. So the potential to have that as a kind of cafe come pub downstairs that's more accessible and maybe in the winter could be used as a smaller winter pub that was cosier, then you know, the floors upstairs are exactly the same size, and then if you were to open up the garden and extend, get rid of the steps and change it into ramps and make it more accessible perhaps for everybody, then the potential for what you could do there is quite massive. But it's potential in terms of a pub, a cafe, and by a cafe, I mean a cafe for all the winter months as well, when other places aren't open, so there's somewhere twelve months a year for people to go. A social sharing space for lots of different activities, a group meeting space for, again, lots of different activities, and out at the back in the gardening space, and I'll touch on that later, because there's a massive potential out there tying them with various organisations and linking back into a kitchen downstairs and what we could do. So the key thing, multi-use and inclusive, and that's absolutely what we mean here, it's not just a bit of pint, but there will be a good pint there, but it's not just a bit of pint. So touching on this, and this is just loosely looking at some of the ideas that's come forward, this is not the definitive plan in any shape or form, but it's just enchanted people some of the ideas that have come up. And if we look at the, say, the downstairs, you've still got a pool table in there, there used to be a strong pool and a strong darts team that worked all through the winter months that could come back, it could be the winter pub, there could be cooking groups involved, because one of the things we're clearly aware of is, if we look, the cellar restaurant shut because it lost its best chef and then it became difficult to attract another chef, and at the end of the day, the restaurant shut, the ship in planned to do food and gave up very quickly because they couldn't get a chef. Trevor is the chef at the haven, but going forward, we could face a problem, we could face a problem trying to find not just a chef, but a good chef, and one we could keep twelve months a year, never mind a season. So it could be, and one of the ideas that's been put forward is, we could be looking at cooking groups and bringing people in, and again, a social circumstance where people come in and maybe cook four, five, six dishes a day and prepare them and they can be sold during the day at a reasonable cost, because again, it's quite expensive to you out here, particularly if you're a young family, so you're going to go out and take a young family, it's going to cost you quite a lot in this area. But if we could be doing something there, offered something that was slightly different, and if we could be doing that with potentially food that was partially grown in the garden, if we could have celluses up right around the garden and growing boxes and tie in with the school, tie in with the allotments association, tie in with the community kitchen and the community fridge, that we could be creating circumstance where part of it was from there, part of it was coming from growers that are putting into the allotment association and the community kitchen, and we were working hand in hand with that, we were producing food that could be bought and consumed, and if it wasn't bought and consumed, it could be going back out to the community fridge. So the potential for things that we could be doing, tying in again with the school, because we've had conversations with Scott Duncan up at Wade Academy, they've just established a tourism and hospitality hub up there, and they're desperate to engage with local businesses for the potential of modern apprenticeships for the kids. So the potential of doing that, providing a social circumstance, maybe the people that cook for that morning pay a pound in a nominal circumstance and sit down and eat together, and it becomes a social thing in a rotor that people can become involved in. So it happens elsewhere, and again, it's just an idea, it's not to say that's the set idea, but if we want to provide high-quality restaurant food, we can bring in guest chefs, so we can do Friday and Saturday nights, bring in guest chefs as we do in many other circumstances, and they come in and provide a different offering to the village in terms of Fridays and Saturday nights, Sunday lunches, we could be working with someone. So there's different ways of looking at how we provide a sustainable circumstance as we go forward. There's the open fire in there, so we look at the upstairs, we've got the open mic and we've got music, it's not just a bit of music that's provided there, it's provided once a month, it could be provided more often, it could be different types of music, there's a, I went and chatted with someone today about the potential for the pub becoming the new home for the new Seladike orchestra, because there are people who play a lot, a lot of people in the village who play classical music, and they get together and are looking for a wee home. So there could be different types of music at different times in the month, that could all be happening there. We could be, so it could be larger groups happening upstairs, it could be the main bar, it could be the restaurant upstairs, we could have games and quiz nights beyond the quiz nights we have just now, we could bring in board games and bring in, again, with a view to getting people out of their houses as it stands, thanks. So and then out in the garden, people used to talk, the amount of stories I've heard about the Thursday night barbecues, where apparently all the tradesmen in the area kept the Thursday night barbecues and tried to get a tradesman on Friday or the weekend, it was impossible, you were written off from Thursday night to Monday morning getting a tradesman, because the barbecues were legendary. So but bringing back things like the barbecues, bringing in guest tastings, one of that's, people come in and doing guest barbecues, people come in doing guest tastings of food, guest tastings of gin, you know, there's a lot of vendors out there that are desperate to come around to facilities like that and do tasting sessions and all the rest of it. We could do it again, different types of music, beer festivals, and the growing food and the gardening thing in terms of tying in with other groups. So there's lots of things we could be doing, that's only suggestions, that's only trying to tickle at the thing and say, look, guys, it's a community facility, you know, we can make it be what it wants, what people want it to be. But don't worry, there'll still be a good pint to be had, you think I like my beer? So in terms of what's required going forward, I'm going to introduce Andrew at this stage, because obviously we have to at some stage formalise this, but we're very, very aware, we don't want people thinking, and what we will do is, we're looking at the website just now, we put up a basic website right at the start, which is just flat pages, and we're already at a point where we're thinking, right, it's probably worth biting the bullet with this wee bit of funding and spending a wee bit of money each year to get a website that could be a bit more dynamic. And what we can then do is potentially put up bios for everybody's involved, because I think it's useful for people to know who's involved and why they're involved, because none of us are in this in any shape or form to make money, we're in it because we want to see a community facility being retained and being broadened in terms of its circumstance. So I'll hand over to Andrew, and Andrew can touch through the kind of formalised bits.
Great, thank you, Brian. So yes, as Brian says, we're fortunate enough, the amount of work that's been done so far has been great, and it's got to the stage where we've had the £2,000 of funding from Plunkett. And because someone's got to be done with that money, we've got to be responsible with that money, we thought we should set up an interim steering group committee, and as Brian says, there are draft committee rules on the website for everyone to have a look at if they're interested, but that would just create a structure within which the chair and the office bearers would be authorised to deal with that and handle that money in a proper kind of format, which we think is important. But that's kind of just the preliminary stage. The next stage, if we get to go ahead and get the enthusiasm to move forward, then it would be to create the Community Benefit Society. And why a Community Benefit Society, there are different sort of legal structures that you could use, but the, basically, the Community Benefit Society is a very well-worn path. I don't know of how many of the two hundred pubs that Brian mentioned use that sort of format, but certainly most of the Scottish ones are run as Community Benefit Societies. And as a consequence, they are approved by funders, they're approved by the government bodies that might provide grants, et cetera, et cetera, so everyone feels very comfortable with the Community Benefit Society. From our point of view, as the community, as Brian says, you hopefully you might get eighty-five percent grant funding for the purchase, with fifteen percent of sixty-three thousand pounds or so that might have to be raised from the community could be done through the issue of community shares. And the Community Benefit Society is geared up to allow shares to be issued. The beauty of the shares are that everybody can contribute whatever amount they like, there may be a certain minimum price of £25 for a share, but if you contribute to £25, you'd have one vote, if you contribute to £25,000, you'd have one vote as well, so it's incredibly democratic, which really suits the idea of the community. It does enable interest, they don't call them dividends on the shares for some reason with the Community Benefit Society, it does enable interest to be paid, it's usually a very small amount, say two percent to five percent, and only if the company or the community benefit, the entity has created enough money. So it's discretionary, the management committee decide if there's enough money to allow an interest payment to be made. The shares don't attract any value, so no one's in it for the money, so it's truly a community engagement really, but if you buy shares or however many, you end up being able to say, well, I own part of a pub, and that's got to be a good thing. So that's really in a nutshell, the sort of legal structure, the formal structure that we might take.
The key perspective with that is, you know, again, you know, you can sell the shares, you decide you're moving on, you're moving away from the area, and you want to cut your ties, you can sell them to someone else, you can transfer your shares. And you could pass them down to your children or pass them around the family, whatever you want, but the whole purpose of it is, is it's not a get-rich-quick scheme, and there's no way that someone can muscle their way in, stick their elbows out and start to enforce an agenda. There's also the fact that a Community Benefit Society is geared to the community, so as the pub, and many of the pubs do make profit and run as, you know, properly sensible businesses, but when there's profit at the end of that, that money can then come back out to the community into other projects. So it's completing circles, and we keep talking about that all the time, is that, talking about the food production and the way we could tie in with all the things there, is that we're completing circles, hopefully, within the community and keeping things within the community and supporting other things within the community. Because when we talked about other groups, I mentioned there used to be a, it's basically a mums and toddlers group that used to happen somewhere, that's, I think it was called Kids and Snacks, and it doesn't happen anymore. But then I've heard comments saying, ah, but you don't, the young mums have just come along, they bring their own coffee and they bring their own water, and, but it's not about that. The whole purpose, if it's going to be a community facility, yeah, there'll be a small hire fee for running that group, and there's probably, there'll be support for people running groups to be able to achieve that, but the purpose of it is, is that every wee toddler has got uncles and grampas and grands and mums and dads, and every mum that's come along has got brothers and sisters and dads and mums. And I go back to a thing that I can completely believe in, and it's beer-related fairly enough. I used to live in Bolton, Bolton down near Manchester before I came up here, and I used to, what, buy ten pubs to go to, one wee pub in Bolton Market, because it was a community in there. And the people that ran the wee bar in the middle of Bolton, Meat and Fish Market, that's the only place I've put long johns on to go for a pint, because at four o'clock in a winter's night, when they opened the door for the guys to clear their stalls out, by God, it was Baltic. But what they used to organise was days out, to go to breweries round about the place, and you'd have thirty, forty people jumping the train and going for an away day, and what a motley crew that was, I'll tell you that, talk about a dysfunctional family. But those people were invested, and they were back in that bar the next day, and the next week, and the next month, and for the couple that have taken over don't do that, and about half the amount of people get into the bar. So when people are invested in something, and that's why community pubs are working, is because it's not the financial investment that people are involved in, it's, they're invested because it's a community facility. And when people are invested, they'll use it more, and when we can see other people in the family getting a benefit, they'll support it more. But there's also the fact that it's a different funding model altogether, you're a charity, there are no business rates, so for a starter, I think that's a big advantage for a business. You'll have a small core staff that'll be paid, because you have to have someone to hold, to be the glue to hold the thing together, but a lot of it's volunteer-based. So again, your operating costs are smaller, you can get people involved in doing projects like, let's get rid of the steps, let's make the steps ramps, that can be done with a couple of people, local, there's already local builders who've hinted that, you know, well, look, I'm prepared to help, and they can come in and supervise and people and get in and get murky for a weekend and suddenly transform a garden, make it more accessible. So there's lots of things that can happen that would never happen in a private business. So that's the kind of key issue going forward. So what is required going forward? Lots of effort. We've put a lot of effort in to date, but there's going to be a heck of a lot more effort going to have to be put in, and you'll see why in a moment. In terms of community engagement, we're coming out with a very open-ended survey monkey, survey, and we'll get the details up on our Facebook page probably tomorrow now. Tonight, I might be able to put a link up later on, but tomorrow, we'll get it up on our Facebook page where people can fill that thing in line. We've got about thirty forms over there short term, if anybody wants to fill in things by hand, I forgot to put the details for your name in detail, so if you're filling it in... So if you're filling it in, please just jot down an email address and a mobile number and your name if you're happy with that. And if you can think of other people that you want us to get a form out to, please leave our name and we'll get a form out to them if they want to fill it in manually. This is our stage of getting people to come in and come up with the ideas, every idea going. We've got to listen to absolutely every idea going because everything matters and everything's got to be heard. We will come back again in due course when we go for funding because the organisation that's Plunkett will insist of me, we put one of their surveys out, which is capable of putting you to sleep. So we've saved you that, we've saved you that hardship at this point in time. But at some stage we're going to apologise to you and we're going to come out and say, please be with us, spend five or seven minutes and go through this form because it will make a difference to us getting funding. But at this stage, we're basically saying to you, what do you think? Please tell us because we are listening. And why are we going to be busy and why is there going to be lots of effort? Because if you look down there in terms of all those organisations, some of them are organisations we've engaged with just now. Some of them are organisations we've just touched base with, right? And some of them are organisations that we've, we've had a first online meeting with Community Shares Scotland and with Plunkett. And they've sent us a whole lot of information which has been part till we get tonight out of the way. And then we start to look at it. There is something called a community pub handbook that Plunkett have got up on their website. So anyone here can go and look at it. And anyone can go and look at any of those websites and get a flavour of who those organisations are. But typically, the community fund through the National Lottery in Scotland, Scottish Land Fund and Community Shares Scotland will typically be the big money holders that we'll have to engage with to get those big lump sums. But there will be additional sums of money that can be made available to us. So like in King's Barns, it's common knowledge that the first six months of the manager's salary has been paid for to give them a heads up. So there will be kind of funding like that and then individual funding to look at improving the facility in terms of its green credentials, in terms of its accessibility and stuff. Will be individual applications as we go and we move forward. But there's a heck of a lot of work to be done. And so we're really keen for more people to step forward if they want to be involved. We're actually quite a nice group of people, we've had quite a lot of fun doing this. It's been a real joy to engage with all the other organisations in the community. But we'd be delighted for anybody else to step forward and say, you know what, I quite like the sound of this and I'd quite like to be involved. What we're doing is typically that the steering group will still retain the kind of four groups below it that have got specific areas, they'll go away and work and do bits and pieces. But it's really from a perspective of when we start to pull documents together and we say something, go and find out about that. Go and find out about that, makes it easier to pull things together and get things done in as tight a timescale as possible. We will be looking, well, we've already had a conversation with Trevor to say, look, you know, we're aware of the sensitivity of you selling your business. We're aware that, you know, and the selling agents will say that any serious bidders are entitled to get a look at the accounts. We've come to an agreement with them that three of us will get a look at the accounts to get the information that we need to ask the questions. Because for this degree of sensitivity, it's Trevor's livelihood, it's Trevor's business. And at the end of the day, it would normally be handled on a one-to-one basis. But he's prepared to open up and let three of us have a look at that and be able to take the information we need to start to prepare a business plan. Because as soon as we can move to that stage, as soon as we're in a position to start submitting serious bids for serious funding and as soon as we're able to get into a position of potentially having serious conversations. The one thing I would say to you is, the figure of £420,000 is a gain price, right? When we get to the stage of putting bidding in and receiving funding, we will not be allowed to offer more than that business is worth by independent barriers. So as has been the case at King's Barns, as has been the case at any of the other circumstances, whatever the seller wants or whatever the selling price is and what the businesses value that, may well be different figures. And that's the nature of business when conversations have to start taking place and negotiations have to start taking place. We are somewhere away from that, however, that will be the circumstance. So lots of organisations to talk to, to get involved with, to get advice from, because we've learned a lot in the last three to four months. But we've got a heck of a lot to learn and we're going to need other skills in terms of other people becoming involved to move the thing forward. And when you look at the other community pub buyouts, you'll, when you read into their stories, they started with one group of people and they've probably ended up with a different set of people because things migrate. There's people who are good at starting things, there are people who are not so good at finishing things. There's people who get different sets of skills that require at different times. So things will evolve. But the point of it is, nobody needs to not be involved, but just some different people will step to the fore more as required. That's basically where we're at in terms of sharing the information that we've got tonight. We want tonight to be as open as possible. So we've got radio mics if anybody wants to, they're asking questions. The floor is yours. Please feel free to ask questions. We'll do our best to answer, if we can't answer, we'll do our best to go away and get you an answer.